Buonasera, buonasera. Buongiorno. Buongiorno.
Buongiorno a tutti, buongiorno sono Francesco Azzarello.
Buongiorno.
Buongiorno.
Just let me few minutes in order to introduce the event and then I give you the word, the floor. So, Daniel. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for attending to this event. That is simple to try to find a cooperation and improve the activities currently we are going to do concerning the research to business approach on the terms related to hydrogen related technologies. I would like to, starting, I would like to give my thanks to the main conference that is hosting this event that is related to ECH2P conference that has been organized in the framework of the International Association of Hydrogen Energy. And then I would like to give my thanks also to the organizing committee. In the first, for sure, I need to give my thanks to Fabio Naro, Professor Fabio Naro, that is the scientific attach of Italian Embassy in Brazil. Then I need to give my thanks to Fabio, to Rolando Pedicini, that is one of my colleagues at the CNR Italia, and he is an expert on the storage of hydrogen. Then I need to give my thanks to Professor Gatto, Leterio Gatto, that is a professor at the Politecnica of Turin, in the Department of Mathematics. My thanks goes also to Professor Spazafumo, that is an expert on LCA on hydrogen. And also to my thanks goes to Ivanis Campos, that is a secretary at Ministry of Sittadania for what concern the bureaucracy for novel partnerships. A special thanks goes, of course, to the Italian Embassy in Brazil for its patronage to this event. But my biggest thanks goes to Daniel, that is chairing with me this conference. And I would like to give to him the floor for explaining a little bit and shortly the program of this event.
Okay, thank you, Massimiliano. I would like to thank all the participants and also say it's a pleasure to be a chair along with you, Massimiliano Lo Faro, on this conference. The workshop for the research to business, as Massimiliano said, is focused on create a type of consortium between scientific and industrial partners of the two cultures, Brazil and Italy, to promote the hydrogen technologies and support the development of the market. The workshop contains the total of 10 presentation, partly from Brazil, partly from Italy, from scientific aspect to industrial needs. We hope that everyone can enjoy your time along with us today. And please, Lo Faro, let's follow up the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. So it is the time and it is my great pleasure to give the floor to the His Excellency, the Ambassador, Francesco Azzarello, for his welcome to this event.
Grazie, grazie. Buongiorno and good morning, since I understood that we are having one official language of the works, but then we have the Italian side or a lot of Brasileiro, parabens, tanti cari saluti a tutti. It is a pleasure to greet you all and congratulate the organizers of this first important Italy-Brasilian meeting on hydrogen and as future energy. Allow me also to greet all the distinguished speakers representing the whole hydrogen network from basic science to industrial application. As we are unfortunately all aware, the world is facing a difficult energy transition and the exchange of experiences, knowledge and resources between Italy and Brazil, two countries which are traditionally more than friends, can play a pivotal role in the world scenario. This first meeting is a great occasion to bring together Italian and Brazilian researchers, stakeholders, companies and industries within these are to be events supported by the embassy in order to strengthen and further develop links and cooperation between our two countries. I wish you all the best and a great work together. Bon lavoro. And let's hope that this symposia, or how we want to, the workshop I think it's called, is going to bring fruitful follow-ups for both sides, since usually the problem is we have a lot of nice meetings now in video conferences that have also the advantages, but then one asks oneself, where are the follow-ups? So my augurio is that there are concrete follow-ups that bring benefit to both our countries. Thank you and goodbye.
Massimiliano, you are mute.
Yeah, yeah, now the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Now, Professor Tizanelli, you start the presentation, please, Tizanelli. You can share your screen. Professor Tizanelli is a bachelor in chemistry and he got his PhD in physical chemistry at San Paolo University. He is full professor at the San Paolo University and he is also member of the San Paolo Academia of Science, the Brazilian Academia of Science and also the Transworld Academia of Science. He has also published more than 220 scientific paper along his career and he is also expert in electrocatalysis of water electrolysis and fuel cell electrochemical reaction. Please, Tizanelli, you can start the presentation. Thank you.
Hi, good morning for all. I am not sure, have you seen my screen?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's working. You can see.
Okay, so I am Edson Tizanelli from University of San Paolo Institute of Chemistry at San Carlos. And today, I am, as mentioned, I am going to speak about fundamental aspects of utilization of non-metalllic catalysts for reaction that occurs on water electrolysis and oxygen reduction reaction. I choose, first of, first I should also thank the organizers for this invitation to participate in this workshop. So I will start my presentation showing a picture of how are the approximate numbers related to hydroelectric energy generation in the country. The numbers are approximate. I took them from a site, so I am not sure that is exact in the number, but it's an approximate that I can follow there. So the scenario of Brazil regarding the production of electric energy in a good time, not now because of the rain problems, is 61% of electric hydropower. We have some biomass electric that is produced by sugarcane bagas, this around 9%. Wind, 11% in our days, and solar, 2%, which make the Brazilian grid quite, if not sustainable, at least renewable. So we still have fossil fuel, 16%, and a minor from nuclear. When we look for the wind and solar, and even now for the hydropower, it's clear that we have to have energy storage because it is to leave the fossil fuel. For example, it can be, for example, water stored in the dam, battery and the super capacitor to store particularly wind and solar energies, and of course hydrogen, that can regulate either these two, wind and solar, particularly solar, and produce hydrogen, has an energy carrier, or eventually other use such as in transportation and the own industries or other use that may be provided in industrial site. Well, taking regarding the electric energy, a sustainable way to store energy is from a hydrogen cycle. That is, you use the electric energy in water electrolysis and then in fuel cells to restore the electrical energy. For example, in the solar case, you can generate hydrogen during the day and act the fuel cells during the night to produce electricity. Here, the schematic of both systems. So first of all, we conduct the water electrolysis to produce hydrogen and then hydrogen enter to the fuel cells to produce back electricity. So it's a way, also battery is an option, is another option, of course, for doing this. But I think regarding the sustainability, fuel cell is better and hydrogen is better. Okay, so that's my field, water electrolysis and the fuel cells. Of course, there are challenges for doing this kind of approach. We have first to overcome regarding the fundamental aspects, the loss of efficiencies due to the problem of kinetics of the reactions. To have the hydrogen evolution or oxidation reaction, oxygen reduction or evolution reaction going in fast speed so to increase the efficiency of energy conversion of these systems. So this is the main research area that I am focused in my research here at fundamental aspect. When Daniel mentioned the electrocatalysis, it was meaning this kind of reaction that of course, not at high temperature, but at low temperatures, it does not goes efficiently usually. So we have to develop catalysts to promote this reaction. And unfortunately, the best catalyst for this is platinum and for obvious reasons that we have to work on kind of subsistence for this catalyst. So with these slides following this presentation, I'm going to show some results of the performance of transition metal dot molybdenum carbide catalysts with carbon and transition metal selenite catalyst, transition metal supported on a carbon nitride materials. All for hydrogen evolution reaction, this red thing is here that is cathodic reaction of water electrolysis and the oxygen reduction reaction, which is the cathodic reaction in the fuel cells. Transition metal is usually, can be molybdenum in our case, but also nickel cobalt and the metal like this. And we use a particular way to prepare this catalyst that is based in a TPTC, this is the formula precursors. There are many ways to prepare this catalyst, we use this one in particular. Okay, so after prepared, all these catalysts has to be characterized and very equipped to do many kind of characterization procedure. I include a few ones here that is usually used in our laboratory, like illustrated here in these figures by the site here. And they are energy dispersing spectroscopy, X-ray fraction, lots of them based on X-ray, scanning electromicroscopy, transmission electromicroscopy. By the way, this is an image of one of the catalysts that I'm going to use here. We see the carbon, we see particles spread over the carbon material and these particles, in these cases, is formed by a iron, nitro, carbon nitride material, which nano-metric size. Regarding the electrochemical investigation, we usually use psychotometry and the steady-state polarization measurements on the laboratory cells. But I'm going to show here at the end of this presentation a result obtained in a single cell. Means that in operational system near the practical system. So now, I'm talking about, I'm going to talking about, I'm afraid about the time, talking about the pH dependency or effect when we stood the hydrogen evolution reaction, this molybdenum carbide based catalyst. Here, the results are for pH1, pH4, to this perchloric acid, this is a buffer at pH4 and pH9, and here, pure KOH, that means pH13. And a group of catalysts all based on molybdenum carbide, with and without this transition metal. So the left side is the result for pH1. I push, so just to, this is the platinum performance and this is the performance of molybdenum carbide and this all here is the performance of the other carbides dot with iron, cobalt and nickel. So we see that the far we are from zero here, the lower is the activity. So in this case, this black line, that black line that's represented by molybdenum carbide is the best resource near platinum, of course, that cannot be separated, has catalysts. So here it's interesting that the addition of iron and nickel and cobalt, instead of improving the performance in this media, it decreased the performance. When we go to higher pH, so the situation is the same, similar regarding the tendency of the behavior of the catalyst, but you can see that we can regenerate much less current in this range of potential. Meaning that this performance of the catalyst, when we raise the pH, is much smaller. At pH9, even worse, and we go, when we go to pH13, is even worse. I would say that not, in this case, it's a very poor performance at this 0.2 volts as compared to the acid electrolyte. So in summary, molybdenum carbide is quite active for the hydrogen evolution in acid media, not as good as platinum, but very good. Transition metal does not help in the acid media. Again, it's good activity for in alkaline media, but in this case, transition metal improve the activity, see the molybdenum carbide here, while here, the green line is cobalt, dot molybdenum carbide. But at higher pH, the activity is much smaller. The reason behind are the material that I took for preparing these diagrams. So when we go to other kind of catalyst, that iron metal, that metal covered on a network of nitrogen, carbon, nitride carbon material, we see that at pH1, the answer is also not as good as platinum or even molybdenum carbide, but still there are some activity for the hydrogen evolution reaction of this material. I would should say, the content of iron is something like 20% in weight of metal regarding the carbon, carbon nitrogen content. Also, the other kind series of catalysts are selenite. Here, the molybdenum selenite, nickel cobalt iron selenite. The experiments here is were made at pH1, which is quite acid, but we see that in this case, the performance is not as good as the molybdenum carbide we showed in previous diagram. Here, the main remarks would be that cobalt and iron cobalt presents good activity for at pH1, for the hydrogen evolution reaction, and molybdenum selenite. Among our selenite is the best for promoting the hydrogen evolution reaction in this pH, pH2.1. Moving to the oxygen reduction reaction, as we see here, is the performance of the iron carbon nitride material, the same I was mentioning the last diagram. But now regarding the oxygen reduction reaction, the same catalyst was stood before for hydrogen evolution, we are also investigate for the oxygen reduction reaction. Here are the results in acid media. So here, the reaction is this one, so the above one is detection of product of reaction, I'm going to comment here, but see here below, is the performance of catalysts prepared with different carbons for the oxygen reduction reaction. As we see, there is a good gap of distance between the performance of platinum, that is used as reference here, and the materials prepared here, except for the carbon mark, monark1000, that the distance is smaller, so we see that's not as good as platinum, but some reasonable activities observed in acid. When we go to the alkaline media for the same materials, here's the acid that in the previous diagram, this is the alkaline media referred to 0.1 molar NOH. So we see here that the performance are very more close to that of platinum, that's this one and the red point here, much better than in acid media, so it's very much approaching the performance of platinum. And here is exactly the same thing, but much slower content of metal. So we have here the material with cobalt and iron spread to the carbon nitride materials, presenting in fact, a little bit more activity than platinum in this case. So the red line is platinum, this triangle here is the cobalt iron carbon nitride system, meaning that is at least in alkaline media, the material prepared here is better than that, than platinum. I cannot say, regarding the stability, we know that stability is good for short cycles, but we did conduct any kind of long-term operation of this material to see if it remains with this activity. Finally, I want to show this last diagram, which represent the performance of the voltage against current density. I should call attention here that I'm talking about unperceived square centimeter of current density crossing the system. And this is performance of a PM fuel cells with electrolyte composed by naphion from Dupont and aquilion from another source of solvace oxides. And membrane which is, see, I think it's 50 micrometer, I'm not sure. This is like a performance in pure hydrogen, the cell is fed with hydrogen in the anode and oxygen in the cathode. So it's operational voltage against current density of pure hydrogen and hydrogen contain some hundred ppm of CO, which is naturally produced when the hydrogen is made from reform of other fuels, yes, we may all know. So we know that at 85° centigrade, when the current is 85° centigrade, the poisoning effect of CO is dramatic. So the performance with pure hydrogen provide very good voltage here, power densities of the order of 1.2 watts per square centimeter and energy conversion efficiency near 40%, but with hundred ppm of CO, it is, I would say, comparing this scale here is a disaster. Not completely, because here, when we change the catalyst, this all are, this most of this material contain the platinum in the cathode and the platinum or lutinium, platinum lutinium iron in the anode. Platinum lutinium is somewhat better even at low temperature, better here also for pure hydrogen and better here when we raise the temperature at 125° centigrade. Here, in the presence of CO, there is a clear increase of the performance even in the presence of CO. So we can reach something like 1.1 watts per square centimeter even the presence of this CO. The difference between naphion and aquilion is marginal here at current density of 2A per square centimeter. Raise a little bit after at higher current, but at least at this point, the performance is reasonable with the lutinium catalyst, not the platinum. So this gives us samples of kind of research that we can do here at our university. So I'm listening here, this final diagram, our authors of, was mentioned in the presentation. I'm mentioning here some collaboration that we studied along 50 years. Antonio Adipoli, Massimiliano Lo Faro, that's here present, and others from Argonne, from Grenoble in France, Anna Maria, this is for Brazil, and Mayro from Canada. So I thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Professor Tizanelli, thank you for your interesting presentation. So now you have time for one question, if someone has question, can use the chat, please.
No. No. Please, there is no. Thank you, Professor, thank you, Professor Tizanelli. So now it is the time for presenting you Viviana Cigolotti. She is a researcher of the Enea, Enea is an institute for high energy in Italy and she is responsible of international, European and national hydrogen related project. So if she is on, ah, perfect, she is connected. So it is my great pleasure to give you the floor for your presentation.
So thank you very much, Massimiliano, thank you all of you, I will share my screen. Okay. Can you see my screen?
Yeah, 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 it's perfect.
Okay, so, good afternoon, I'm Viviana Cigolotti and I'm researcher in Enea. Enea is the Italian National Agency for New Technology, Energy and Sustainable Economic Development. I'm in particular, I'm involved in, I'm a researcher in Department of Energy, Technology and Renewable Sources, working on hydrogen and fuel cell technologies. So today, I'm here on behalf of Giulia Monteleone, who is the responsible of all the activities in Enea related to hydrogen and fuel cell and also batteries. So today, I will give you some information that are less technical and scientific than the previous, you know, speech, that are related to the initiative for the technological development and role of R&amp;D, so research and development to support the national industries, so in Italy. Okay, so hydrogen has been identified as an energy vector for decarbonization of the European priorities. As you know, the final, the final... As you know, the final, the European Hydrogen Strategy has been published in July twenty twenty. And so this strategy is focused on to favor favoring the use of hydrogen in all the sectors where the directors of the electricity is produced from renewable sources is not possible. So here you can see some numbers related to the European strategy. So from today, the focus is the objective in to install six gigawatt over renewable hydrogen electrolyzer in Europe. Then to go for ten, forty gigawatt of hydrogen green energy production up to two thousand thirty, where the hydrogen renewable and green energy will be deployed at large scale across all the all the sectors. So here you can see that there are, so the strategy came to cover all the hydrogen value chain. So from the hydrogen production to distribution, direct to the decarbonization of end use. From the, so to support the decarbonization on the transport sector, the to support the decarbonization of industrial energy use, the building, so the decarbonization of building it and power and also to to serve as a renewable feedback. And more or less the the main aim is to decrease the cost of the hydrogen up to one point five two euro per kilo in two thousand twenty five and one to one to one point five euro per kilo in two thousand thirteen. There are several member states in Europe that have already launched and published their own hydrogen strategy and have implemented several activities in order to develop into the hydrogen economy. Also, Italy has published the National Hydrogen Strategy Guidelines in last December, where there are several also information and several objectives in the plan for recovering resilience. So here you can see, for example, that Germany have put in the German strategy, there are seven billion of euro on the development of hydrogen technology and so on. They also Spain, France, Portugal, Austria, and as I've already said, in Italy. So also the research, the research activities related on all the hydrogen value chain can be considered an success story. For example, that I don't know if you are already aware that there is a public private partnership in Europe funded by European Commission, also private companies, European private companies that started in two thousand seven. And so where several project has been already funded. For example, here you can find some numbers and topics related only to electrolyzers. So here the this public private partnership has already funded more than one hundred thirty five million of euro only on electrolyzer activity, where investing a lot of money in several research R and D project. So and so this is, this can be considered in Europe really a success story. Here, for example, is the some number related to the electrolyzer activity, activity related to hydrogen production. But we have hydrogen distribution, hydrogen end use for fuel cell, low temperature, high temperature of fuel cell and so on. So there is a huge participation. Related concerning Italy, we have, in Italy, we have mobilized from EU a total of one hundred seventy million of euro funding from the public private partnership FGAGU from two thousand eight to two thousand twenty, with over then one hundred sixty project already funded, supporting one hundred twenty beneficiaries in three hundred twenty one participation. So the, you know, the impact of this kind of activity on our, on the Italian research R and D is has been really important because, you know, the national funding during the last ten years were not sufficient to, you know, to support the activity, the research activity on hydrogen fuel cell technology. So this, you know, the funding from EU has been for us. I say for us because Enea is one of the main participants, CNR or other universities in this public private partnership. At national level, there are the fund for research on electrical system, funding by a component of electricity tariff through the Italian Ministry of Economic Development. And actually, this mainly focus on power to gas technology development. But also a dedicated activity on energy will be funded from two thousand twenty two, two thousand twenty four. There are also national programs currently funding around eight million of euro. And a lot of R and D taking place among universities, SMEs and so on and so on. So the Italy's think to invest around ten billion of euro to two thousand thirty, coming off coming from European funds and private investments in order to boost and to deploy the the production of grid hydrogen, about five gigawatt of electricity capacity that will be introduced or would be introduced up to two thousand thirty. In order to cover two percent of Italian final energy demand and help to decrease the CO two emission up to eight million of tons. In Italy, there are several key sectors where work stream in which our R and D stakeholders are involved. We can start from hydrogen production. And the main topics are related to sustainability and guarantee origins, system, all the system for hydrogen production incentives to grid hydrogen. So there are several topics around the hydrogen production one. Concerning the logistic and distribution, we are actually, in Italy, we are working on review legal framework, also expand also several application opportunities and harmonize legal framework for port and airports. Related to hydrogen storage, there are several topics related to different innovative solution. Also legal framework supporting scheme and also social acceptance. For mobility, there is in place some, you know, the direct on national infrastructure, on hydrogen refilling station and also public procurement, including fuel cell, electrical vehicles and regulation for new products. Related to industrial and commercial and residential application, you know, the systems are very close to a, you know, to a commercial, to be on the market. So we need a support to large scale for hydrogen project in industry, but also in residential, for as a residential application. In the energy sector, there are several also projects related to the power to power system interface with national power grids, injection of green or low carbon hydrogen in the gas, in the gas grid in order to increase the penetration of renewables using also some surplus in order to produce hydrogen and to store it for a long period. So the research in Italy is something that can be, can work together. Actually, it's work together with also the industry in order to, you know, to foster to to be the base for finding new, for deploying, develop and also deploy new ideas, new technologies for the hydrogen market. So our idea is to try to, you know, create a circular success story where also the the industry can be boosted, can be funded by and helped, supported by the research. Enea, as I already told you, is the Italian National Agency for New Technology, Energy and Sustainable Economic Development. We are a public research center with four departments. One related on the energy technology and renewable energy sources, one, another one on energy efficiency, environmental sustainability and fusion nuclear safety. It's the second Italian research organization with more than two hundred seven, two thousand seven hundred employees. We had a department in Rome and several offices and also research center around Italy and also an office in Brussels. The Casaccia Research Center is the largest research center in laboratories and demo site in Italy, in foreign Enea in Italy. So it's located close to Rome and where there are more than one hundred ninety buildings concerning considering office, laboratories, demo plants and infrastructure. Related to the research on hydrogen, what we are doing. So we have several European and national project active at the moment. But so I share with you some information related to what we are doing, what we start this year. So we are coordinator of Prometio Project, who is funded by FGAGU partnership, where we, with the main aim of producing grid hydrogen from renewable it and and power sources. Then we are also coordinator of SOFREE, who already is a project started in two thousand twenty one. So this year, in this January, where we are coordinating the design, development and testing of two fuel flexible systems, CHP system based on sodium oxide fuel cell, where we will test and we will use different kind of composition of hydrogen and methane. Then we are also part of BLADES project in order, where the main aim is to develop a combined it and power system directly from biomass, including gasification and coupling local acidification and sodium oxide field cell system. We are also a part of other two very interesting and important research European project more related to the port application and maritime application. For example, in E ships, we are partner of E ships, where we are working on the so the integration of all the prenormative research activities on standards with simulation and laboratory experiment in order to analyze, to define the future fuel cell and hydrogen system that can be installed, can be installed in a, in different kind of ships, starting from small one to the large one. Then we are also part and partner of H two port project, that there is the first application of hydrogen technology in a real port. So the, we are developing a yacht tractor in Valencia that will be used in Valencia terminal by a real end user with Grimaldi Group. And so this is the first European project funding a real application of hydrogen fuel cell in a, in a European port, that is in this case is in Spain, in Valencia. So from the international point of view, Italy participates in Mission Innovation ICA, renewable and clean hydrogen. Also, we, Italy is supporting the first IPCI, Important Project of European Interest on Hydrogen. Also, there are already new information on recovery and resilience fund, where three point six billion of euro will be used for funding hydrogen value chain. So we also, Italian players stakeholders from research and industry are part and are working in the Clean Hydrogen for Europe partnership, that will be the new partnership at the end of fuel cell and hydrogen joint undertaking. And also the Italian stakeholders are very much involved in Euro European Clean Hydrogen Alliance. So in particular, we are the main beneficiary in Mission Innovation ICA, where we are developing and building a nitrogen demo valley in Casaccia Research Center that I showed you before. And so Enea is supporting the Ministry of Economic Development in preparing the Italian project portfolio for the first IPCI project on hydrogen. And so different companies in Italy are part of the IPCI and also Enea is a very important project under this this program. Moreover, Enea is collaborating with Confindustria in order to map in Italian value chain, know how and also market opportunities related to hydrogen field set technologies. And we are in the governing board also the National Association of Hydrogen and Field Cell Technologies in Italy, is H two IT, that now counts more than eighty associates. It's very important because we started with less than twenty, one year ago. Enea coordinate also the European Energy Research Alliance, in particular, the joint program on fuel cell and hydrogen. So we are coordinator of the very, very active joint program. And also we are the national delegate for the IEA Technology Collaboration Program on Hydrogen and also Fuel Cell. For example, in the Technology Collaboration Program on Fuel Cell, I am, in particular, I am the coordinator of one task related to the stationary fuel cell application. So we are one of the main contact among Italian stakeholders in Europe and also at international level. So here you can see all our participation from, as I already said, at European and national, international level. In particular, for which concern the Mission Innovation Program, we are working in ICA, so with hydrogen and fuel cell technology and
Viviana, one minute. One minute, please.
Yes, yes. With, so we, we have all the, the program is eighteen million of euro to this, in particular, to this challenge. In particular, we are, as I already told you, we are developing and so we start in May, this May, May twenty twenty first, a project focused on the development and building a nitrogen demo valley in Casaccia Research Center. So we are, we will receive fourteen million of euro funding, where we have to develop and where we will have different facilities that you can see from hydrogen production. We will have an hydrogen pipeline or an hydrogen blending with methane. And we will have several technologies to test, to test yet. So from a temp fuel cell, sodium oxide fuel cell, high temp, sodium oxide electrolyzer and so on. So I hope to be on time in for my last minutes.
Thank you, Viviana.
Your attention?
Thank you, Viviana. Now you have been in time and we have the time for just a very quick question. Coming from Adolfo Giuliani, our common friend Adolfo Giuliani. He's saying, at beginning, he's congratulating with you for the presentation. Then he is asking about a wider hydrogen utilization needs for a wider network, both from industrial and the research point of views. What is the status of the hydrogen networking in Italy and the perspectives in the point of view, in your point of view for the future? And hydrogen demo valley seems to be a first approach for that. What is your opinion, is writing?
Yes, so I agree with Adolfo, is a common friend. So I thank you for, I thank him for the question. Yes, of course, I agree with him that we need to work all together, not only research institution, but also universities and private stakeholders in order to reach the, you know, the common objective. The hydrogen demo valley can be, at the moment, is the first one in Italy. And the main difficulty for us is that we, we have to build an hydrogen demo valley in a public research center. So I don't know in your case, but to be a public research center in Italy, something that can be a nightmare if you want to build something in, in a three years video. So we are very much focused on this because we, our aim is to, to, to give the opportunity to all the stakeholders, not only from private sector, but also to public one like CNR or university, to come to our hydrogen valley with ideas, with, you know, ideas on testing activities, on developing new technology. Because we will have in the, in three years, a real place to work all together, as Adolfo said, this is a network. And then a second reply, I can say that the Italian National Association on Hydrogen and Field Set Technologies, so H two IT is a very good place to discuss with all these stakeholders involved in this value chain, hydrogen value chain. Because there are a lot of interested private companies and also public institution. It's a very good place, very active, where we can discuss and build opportunity for the future.
Okay. Thank you so much. We have another question, but please stay, stay short if it is, if it is possible. What about the hydrogen valley in Puglia, Sicilia and Venice?
I don't know. So it's, I don't have information on this hydrogen valley. So it's, I I don't have information on this hydrogen valley. I can give you information related to the that one in Enea that has been already funded by the Ministry of Economic Development, is already funded. We started on in May twenty twenty-one. And so we are working for it, is a public funding and we are focused on, we don't know information related to the other one, if they are funded by regional regions, Ministry of European Funds.
Thank you, Viviana. Thank you again.
Thank you, Viviana. Now, the the foremost for the Professor Miranda. Professor Miranda, we start the presentation, please. You can share your screen with us.
Okay, thank you. I'm just doing this now.
Let's introduce Professor Miranda. He got he got his Bachelor in P D in Metallurgical and Materials Engineer at Federal University of Rio de Janeiro. He is also a full professor at Federal University of Rio de Janeiro. And he is also president of the Brazilian Hydrogen Association. And he is an expert in the areas related to the application of hydrogen by using solid oxide fuel cell, by the development of abuses and both with with energy power train by using fuel cells. So please, Professor Miranda, you can start your presentation. Thank you very much.
Okay, so hi. It's a pleasure for me to be here and to have this opportunity to speak on hydrogen energy in the Brazilian context. And I would like to thank the organizers for the invitation and for this possibility. I would like to begin telling you a little bit about the Brazilian Hydrogen Association, which was created in two thousand and seventeen. And today has already an important number of members, professional members in Brazil, but also companies that are that are acting together with the A two administration of this area of hydrogen energy in Brazil. While the Brazilian Hydrogen Association is working very closely with industries from several sectors in Brazil, not only new industries that are coming on this area, but also helping on the network and bringing conventional industries already working in Brazil to get interested and to have developments in this area of hydrogen and fuel cells. We also work on the area of hydrogen-related safety codes, standards and regulations. And important actions are also being done with ministries and national agencies that finance research and development and, you know, big projects in this area in Brazil. The activities in hydrogen energy in Brazil, they they come from many years already and they became more intensive after Brazil was a co-founder of the IPHE, the International Partnership for Hydrogen and Fuel Cells in the Economy in two thousand and three. And already in two thousand and five, a first roadmap for hydrogen energy in Brazil was published and after that, a few other documents. But something very important comes now because in two thousand and twenty-one, Brazil began begins to to have the basis for a new Brazilian national hydrogen program, considering technology development, human resources formation in different levels, energy planning, regulation codes and standards, a special effort on market stimulation and also international cooperation. Well, if we look at this area in Brazil, we we see some differences related to other countries. It is true that we, like any other country, understand that hydrogen is important to stabilize locally our electrical energy mix. But we have an important consideration about biomass in Brazil. Brazil is an agro-industrial country and this is something that we're going to talk a little bit more and it is important in Brazil. In these last two decades, not only money from the government, but also from private companies, there has been an intense, I would say, investment on technological developments. And nowadays, in a few areas of hydrogen energy technology, there are important developments in Brazil. We think that in Brazil, as in other places, heavy vehicles, they are a market initiation for hydrogen technology. There are a few, let's say, easier points to begin with buses, trucks, trains. But as others, we also have these hard-to-abide sectors like steel, cement, mining, and we are working on that. We do believe that we can create new companies and new jobs in Brazil in this area of hydrogen energy. And today, hydrogen is used in Brazil as a feedstock. And we know that hydrogen will be can become a good energy carrier, just like electricity, but also a fuel, and we're going to talk about it. If we look at the potential for hydrogen production in Brazil, starting from fossil fuels, we can say that the Brazilian production of oil and gas nowadays is is very important. And there are a few places in the country where we produce oil and gas. And most of our hydrogen is produced today from steam reforming of natural gas. We're going to talk a little bit more about it. But we have a a huge potential to produce green hydrogen. We have a bad moment right now for hydroelectric power, but we have an intense production of electricity in Brazil from hydroelectric power. We have a big region here in the interior of Brazil, which is important for solar energy production. And in the northeast and in the south of Brazil, we already have important production of electricity from wind energy, which is important for water electrolysis. There are developments in Brazil for the use of ocean energy to produce electricity. And we haven't made much about geothermal energy, although there is a a potential for that in Brazil. But there's something very interesting is that natural hydrogen occurrences were already proved in Brazil in in a few places. And we see a prospect that in the future, we will have natural hydrogen wells in Brazil producing green hydrogen. If you want to know a little bit more about it, this is discussed in the first chapter of this reference here. Well, the Brazilian energy mix is more renewable than the average in the world. So major market huddles are not the energy sector emissions in Brazil. Although, of course, for example, the transportation sector, because the utilization of diesel makes much CO two and particulate emissions. But in general, we have today in Brazil, a good situation in terms of renewables in our energy matrix. And we see as the hydrogen playing an important role in Brazil. Initially, as sector coupling, that is, hydrogen may be used as a tool to connect sectors such as electricity, transport, industry, fertilizers, and also for blending hydrogen with natural gas in our pipelines. We also think it is will be important for the modernization of our transportation system and to increase the value chain of waste from biomass. And also to help to decarbonize the hard-to-abide sectors, as I have already said. Nowadays, most of the hydrogen is produced in Brazil from the steam reforming of natural gas. But we also produce mature hydrogen to be used in fertilizers. Our petrochemical industry also utilizes hydrogen and other industries too. If we look at the possibilities that we would have with using natural gas to produce blue hydrogen in Brazil, they're very interesting. And this may be important in the transition to a green hydrogen era in Brazil, especially if we use this blue hydrogen production to store CO two in enhanced oil recovery processes. We see very important prospects that may give us, for example, almost six times more hydrogen than the whole hydrogen produced and used in Brazil today. Or if we use the whole potential, we may reach something like seventeen times the whole hydrogen produced in Brazil today. This can be further analyzed in this reference that is shown here. We have now in Brazil a few projects, big projects for green hydrogen production. There are others, but I I brought two here. One is in Seara, in the port of Pessin, which has the prospects of producing nine hundred kilotons of hydrogen per year. And an important part of this hydrogen will have the destination of exportation mainly to Europe. But other parts of this hydrogen will also be used locally in Seara. And there is another big project in on the Assu Port in Rio de Janeiro State, where the objective is the production of green ammonia. We're talking here about produce producing two hundred and fifty kilotons of green ammonia per year. And as I told you before, we have to consider biomass when we talk about green hydrogen in Brazil. Because in addition to the water electrolysis of to produce a green hydrogen, biomass is an important source of raw material to produce hydrogen, green hydrogen in Brazil, especially when we talk about biogas. You see already nowadays, if we look at this map, these are places in Brazil where there is production of a biogas. And we see in this graph here on the right hand side, how this has increased in the last years. And we see that the Brazilian potential today of producing biogas would give you, would give us something like eight point six times the whole hydrogen that is produced in Brazil today. Well, one thing interesting about
One minute, please.
Biogas, pardon, is that we can make the dry reforming of biogas. That is, we use CO two to do this by reforming. And we end up with a thin gas with its hydrogen and carbon monoxide. And we can separate hydrogen from it and we will have green hydrogen. If we want to use this green hydrogen in pan fuel cells, of course, we have to do water gas shifting reactions with the CO two to produce more hydrogen and to clean the CO two from the higher hydrogen to be used in pan fuel cells. But alternatively, we can use this thin gas in solid oxide fuel cells because those are fuels for solid oxide fuel cells, especially if the solid oxide fuel cells have multifunctional nodes. They are already designed for the use of carbonaceous fuels. If you look at this slide that I took from a presentation made by Ibrahim Dancer in this Congress that we are now, and we look at biomass here, we see how important it is to produce hydrogen from biomass. And you see in this graph here, it was not considered. But if we consider producing hydrogen from biomass and sequestering the CO two, we can have negative emissions of CO two. This is because the carbon that there is in CO two is is not coming from underground. This is a carbon that came from the photosynthesis of a plant. Well, to end my presentation, I'd like to invite you to participate at the Second Brazilian Hydrogen Congress that will be held on December the eighth and the ninth this year. Our motto for this conference is "Developments and legal bases for low-carbon hydrogen technology markets" will be dealing with public policies, regulations and standards, zero emission hydrogen production, hydrogen market and sustainable mobility. So thank you very much. This is what I had to present to you today. Thank you.
Thank you, Professor Miranda. Thank you for the interesting presentation to show us new possibilities. We have time for one question. There is one question. Adolfo Luliano Nelli. He wrote, "Thanks for the nice presentation. Brazil is one of the main producer of bioethanol. In our knowledge, could be a reliable route to explore bioethanol for hydrogen generation, reform the hydrogen generation and so on, without create a crisis between the food and food as a final utilization of the bioagro-food based resource."
Well, the bioethanol industry is very important in Brazil. We produce and use a huge amount of ethanol in Brazil. And the prospect is that this production is increasing for the years to come. And effectively, there are several ways that the production of ethanol in Brazil may interact with the hydrogen energy industry in Brazil. To begin with, we we can use waste from the production of ethanol to produce hydrogen in Brazil. And this is already an important biomass that can be used for the production of ethanol in Brazil. We can also do ethanol reforming all over the country because we have ethanol available in Brazil all over the country to produce hydrogen. And we can indeed, as you have suggested, export ethanol so that it will be used abroad to produce hydrogen. So there are so many possibilities with this biomass product in Brazil with respect to hydrogen energy in Brazil.
Okay. Thank you again, Professor Miranda. And thank you to be part of this workshop. And now we can follow up again with Maximiliano.
Yeah, thank you, Professor Miranda. Now is the time for having the in the main floor, Dario Montinaro. I know him from a long time. When he was, I was started to work at CNN and he was a specialist in soft for the Eurocoating, a company based on the north part of Italy. This company then was moved to Soft Power and then furthermore to the current multinational named as Solid Power. Now he is Material Process Manager within this company. That is a very well-recognized company for manufacturing of solid oxide fuel cells and solid oxide electrolyzer. So thank you, Dario Montinaro, for having participated to this conference. It's my pleasure to give you the floor.
Thank you very much, Dr. Lo Faro, for your very kind introduction. And thank you to all the organizers to invite me to join this workshop. It's my pleasure to present our company here today. Can you see my screen?
Yeah, Dario, can I go ahead?
Okay, thank you.
In full screen, please, full presentation.
Okay. So today we'll give you an overview of the company, especially focusing on our new industrial plant for the production of cells and stacks, and an overview of our products and the field experience, and also some recent results in the field of solid oxide electrolysis.
Excuse Dario, we are just seeing the lateral bar with the slides. So if you can put in full screen with the tab closer to the magnification bar. Yes, that's this one, fine.
Do you see a full screen?
Not yet, not yet, not yet. But today we experienced such problem also in other rooms. So probably if you put a large at maximum is better, okay, the same. Okay, okay, but you can go ahead the same, we can.
I think I can try another option.
Because probably you shared perfect, now it's okay.
Okay, good. So our company has today more than twenty years' experience and more most of us comes from the first experience in the beginning of 2000. Basically, the Italian company was founded in 2007. And we have started to develop the technology, starting from anode-supported solid oxide fuel cells and focusing on development of cogenerator, especially micro G H P. We have participated on several European projects, especially, I would like to mention Enefield, which has been the first European project aiming to demonstrate the operation of our systems in the field. Big step has been in 2015, when we have acquired a facility from our former competitor CFCL, Australian company. And we have restarted the commercialization of the BlueGen unit in our facility in Germany. And thanks to the join of the Reuters in Italy and the TND from Switzerland and Australia, we have developed the new system, which is the BlueGen 15. We'll talk about the products later. But anyway, the big step in our company has been the start of the new production plant, which is in Italy, is near Trento. And we produce solid oxide fuel cell. So today, the group includes five sites, two in Italy, close to Trento, one in Mezzolombardo and the other one in Perugia and Vazugana, where we have the production. Then we have a assembling facility in Germany, where we produce the BlueGen. We have a small research and development group in Switzerland and another one in Australia, close to Melbourne. The group today includes more than two hundred and fifty people. The new production plant started last year in August. And it is designed to produce up to twenty-five megawatt capacity on two shifts. Actually, now we are running on one shift, considering system of one point five kilowatts. Normally, we produce the stacks in this facility in Italy. And we send the stacks in Germany, where the BlueGen is assembled. The new plant is dedicated to the production of solid oxide fuel cell stacks, starting from the raw materials of the cells. So we receive the raw materials powders and we start the preparation of the slaris, inks, and so on. So the plant include a preparation area, where we process the raw materials, a transformation area, where we have all the ceramic processing lines, including tape casting, screen printing, and inkjet printing, and a stack assembling line with an I automation to produce the stacks from the component. We also have a big sintering area, where the sintering furnaces are installed, and the stack conditioning, where the stacks produced are qualified for the quality check. Today, our product portfolio includes two systems, Big BlueGen 15 and BlueGen 60. BlueGen 15 dedicated mainly to residential and small commercial application, and it is a one point five kilowatt unit cogenerator. BG 60 is a six-kilowatt unit, and this is designed especially for small commercial and hotels and restaurants application. But we can also produce, we can also propose two stacks design as our product. So we have two stacks for two system modules. One point five kilowatt, our traditional G8 stack, that has been developed since the beginning of our experience in solid oxide fuel cell. And it is today on the market. And the new design, which is specially designed for large-scale application and high-temperature electrolysis. And this is today on a prototyping phase. The marketing introduction is planned next year. So basically, our technology is started many years ago with the concept of gas to power and heat, typical cogeneration. But in the last years, I would say in the last ten years, we have started to gain experience also in high-temperature electrolysis, demonstrated the operation in power to hydrogen, power to gas, working in co-electrolysis condition, and power to power for reversible operation. About our field experience, the market is mainly focused today in Europe, but we are also expanding to U.S. and Far East. G8 stack is our one point five kilowatt unit installed on our BG 15 modules. The technology is based on planar anode solid oxide fuel cells. We use very conventional materials, so starting from nickel oxide and zirconia and mixed peroxide for the oxygen electrode. Actually, we use the same technology for SOFC mode and electrolysis as well. So that we don't have, we don't need to change materials or design. We use the same device, basically. And the new stack design is a big one. This is designed to reach eight kilowatt, eight kilowatt power DC in SOFC mode and up to twenty-five kilowatt in high-temperature electrolysis mode. The concept of this stack is to enlarge the active area of each repeating element by multiplying the the number of cells on each repeating element. So the most conventional unit that we are prototyping is based on four cells on each plane. So the active area of each interconnect is three hundred and twenty square centimeter. And we can make towers from sixty to eighty repeating elements in order to reach the eight kilowatt in SOFC mode. Thanks to this new design, we have already performed the test in SOFC mode as well, in SOEC mode. And we have also developed what we call the Large Stack Module, which is a not box, a very big not box, including four stacks with, from a larger size, which can reach twenty-five to thirty-two kilowatt in fuel cell mode, depending on the tower that we use, the number of repeating elements used in this design, and up to one hundred kilowatt in electrolysis mode. We have already tested these systems in some projects and also thanks to some European partners, including DLR in Germany and CEA in France. We have tested the stack module to demonstrate the operation up to twenty-five kilowatt in 2019, three years ago. And most interesting, we have demonstrated the operation in high-temperature electrolysis mode in order to reach more than fifty kilograms of hydrogen produced in one day with four stacks. About the long-term operation, we have tested our stacks mainly in the frame of several projects, thanks to the collaboration of some research institutes and other partners. Especially, I would like to mention the project ECO, where we have tested our stacks in co-electrolysis condition using CO2 and steam. This test lasts up to fifteen thousand hours, basically without any degradation. And we also tested in the frame of the project Sofia at VTT, co-electrolysis condition under load cycling. This was especially addressed to the combination of high-temperature co-electrolysis with intermittent renewable sources. We have demonstrated that with this technology, the intermittent operation does not affect the durability of the device. So we can reach a very long, very large number of cycles, basically without degradation. This test that you can see in the slide was operated for more than five thousand two hundred hours. And we have reached more than eleven hundred cycles, corresponding more or less to thirty years, making one cycle per day, which is more than enough for this kind of application. We have done most of the work thanks to the support of the Department of Business, Energy, and Industrial Strategy of Trento. And thanks to the support of fuel cell and hydrogen joint undertaking. Where we have participated in the frame of many, many European projects. I would like to cite, to mention only the most recent ones. Some of them are addressed to the extended lifetime cost reduction and field testing of the cogenerators. And in this case, the main focus is on our current technology, the G880, I mean, the cogenerators, which are currently on the market. And we have also investigated several issues and we have developed the new devices for high-temperature electrolysis application thanks to many other projects, starting from the project Adel in 2011. And we are still working on this topic now in the frame of several European projects that you can see in this slide. From our side, thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Dario. Thank you so much for your presentation. And I know very well that your products, since generally we have tests with your products. So I'm going to read some questions coming from the audience. The first one is given by Giovanni Vittorio Maschado. No, no, it is for Adolfo, probably. I would like to let you know that in 2022, there will be the important project in Brazil on solid oxide fuel cell. I would like to know if Solid Power would begin to partner with this development. This question is given by Paulo Emilio de Miranda.
It's for sure a good opportunity and an interesting conference. I will discuss that internally and I will let you know.
Okay, if you want to contact me at any time.
Yes, yes, of course. Thank you.
Thank you, Dario, again. And now a communication for all, for all audience. We have just a very short break in order to take a coffee. It is planned for five minutes, but I would prefer to reduce this time because we are just a little bit late on the program. And the next, this is the first communication. So we start from now, and then we will back in the same room. Please don't change room, stay in this same room in order to avoid any missing people, okay? So see you in, at four, at forty-five, sorry. Four o'clock, four forty-five is Italian time. Eleven forty-five. 11:45.
See you soon.
Okay, Daniele, would you like to start again?
Yeah, we can start again. Let me see if this is right.
Yes, I'm here. I tried to upload my presentation.
Okay, let's start again now. Mr. Deitz will start the presentation and share our screen. So Mr. Deitz got his bachelor and master degree in industrial automation and control at Federal University of Santa Catarina in Brazil. And he has also MBA in administration, focused on business for electric sector. And he is currently the technical director at Itaipu Technology Park. So please, you can start the presentation, Deitz. The room is yours. Thank you.
The presentation is loading.
It's fine for us.
Okay, do you see anything?
Yes, yes, perfect.
Oh, I don't see anything.
If you'd like, if you'd like, you can, you can try again, close and upload again, but it's work for us.
But I can see. Sorry. Stopped?
Yeah, it stopped. Please share the screen again.
Yes. Okay, try another way. This way. You can see my screen?
Yes.
Not yet. Yes, now.
Yes, now it's working.
Okay.
Okay.
So firstly, good afternoon and good morning to our Brazilian friends and Italian friends as well. My name is Rafael. I'm currently technical director of PTI, Itaipu Technology Park. So I'm going to share with you a few moments on a few thoughts on renewable energy opportunities for the energy sector. And I'll try to look at the practical approach, looking for how we are using knowledge, technology to bring solutions for the energy sector and obviously thinking about hydrogen. So very, very quick, I'll talk about Itaipu Technology Park. We are hosted inside at the Itaipu Bilateral Power Plant here in Iguaçu Falls, Brazil, on the border of two other countries, Paraguay and Argentina, which is really special place. Our purpose, which I would like to share with you, is to integrate and transform knowledge and technology into solutions for the progress of society. And some of the cases I will show you will be very clear that our job is being done very successfully, I believe. So bringing to the topic here, energy sector and looking to the energy transition. It's already happening, it's a fact, and as well is a global challenge. But as a challenge that it is, it's also an opportunity. And there's several opportunities to be, to be fueled. And our approach is to look at developing technologies, solutions to solve local problems. And by solving local problems, we can replicate on a global scale. So this is basically our approach here. PTI has many, we have few, four activities. But what I'm going to stress here is the technology solution, our R&amp;D centers, which basically work with technical training, creating solutions, technical solutions and customized services for special clients. We have several R&amp;D centers and four main areas of acting. But the focus here is talk about energy and our renewable energy R&amp;D center, which helps us as PTI, as the technology park, to transform energy sector by leading R&amp;D along with these centers. So what I'd like to share with you is the view of our R&amp;D center, which works basically with two areas of expertise. I will start with energy security and efficiency and then move on to sustainability and decarbonization, where we have hydrogen more specifically. But I think both of them are connected. And it's, it's worth to, to show you some of the cases that we have here. Our main purpose is to promote this technology and also market developments. Thinking about energy transition, we would like to be part of it through sustainable and innovative solutions. So when think about energy security and efficiency, basically we're talking about energy analysis, storage, storage system, solutions, and integrated energy solutions in a broader way. Looking at the scenario that we have here, not only here, but it's a proxy of the road, I would say. We could say that there are several challenges that have been addressed by the government, by states, and supported by this public agenda. But we are moving from a centralized control view, where demand reaches supply every second, to a very different, non-centralizer, completely decentralized solution in the grid. As many of you, I guess, know, Brazil has a huge grid, which is an interconnected grid and controlled by a national operator, which we call ONS, the national operator of this system. So we do have several challenges in looking at this. We come from a basically renewable matrix. When looking at the electrical energies, over around 70 to 80% due to this hydro, hydroelectric power plant dominance. But we would like to improve it, we'd like to move forward to 100% renewable energy sources. So we've been seeing over the past few years the introduction of solar, basically solar and wind power sources in the grid, which brings us a lot of benefits as the idea of what we call prosumer, which is a production and consumer at the same point. So your house can generate energy and feed the grid with this energy. But it also comes with real complexity cost for this general or national operator. When looking at this, we see a close relation between improve security on the national grid to create solutions for backup or compensation of this wind and solar energy variability. So it's impossible to predict this or to control the sun and wind. So we do need some fast response and peak shaving solutions, as well as look to the environmental impact, which is what we are talking here. So what we are thinking about is to integrate energy solution, energy storage solutions that are already aligned to the national strategy and policies that the government has been, has been conducting. We use a lot of, we put our effort on electrochemical storage systems and I'm going to talk a little bit more in a sequence. What we call is tropicalizing the solutions, I mean, making it look like adaptable to the Brazilian weather, for example, or the Brazilian type of usage. And we develop a lot of solutions using salt batteries or salt-based batteries because I think they're, they're really special and important. So there are several benefits on creating solutions for energy storage to using salt-based batteries because, well, it's 100% recyclable and we're talking about sustainability, we're talking about solutions that are clean. So this is very important. It's a better fit for tropical climate, which is the case of Brazil, high temperatures here. It's very, really robust, reliable and durable, around 10 to 12 years lifecycle existence. And there's also a lot of opportunity for efficiency improvement. So here in one image, I have a couple of cases that we integrate this idea of having energy storage to solve this problem that we see here in our grid when introducing renewable energy sources. So we do have solutions for off-grid. So it's a standalone solution that we, for example, have installed on Amazonia or really remote and isolated places where the grid doesn't reach. So it's really important to have such kind of solution. We do have own grid solutions that are connected to the grid, that respond and communicate to the grid using a BMS, battery energy system that we also develop internally, which is capable of reading the grid and communicating in a sense that optimize the use of the solution, the battery solution. And as well in the sense of using batteries for, for mobile or for mobility. We have, or we are working on a solution of a hybrid bus, which is ethanol plus battery plus electrical energy. And also moving forward to the idea of using battery solutions or storage solutions to improve the security of the grid. We, we see an opportunity when looking at electric vehicle. We see an increase of use of electric and or hybrid vehicles. But they have some regulation issues. For example, the SLC, the state of charge, if they go lower than 80%, you cannot use the battery anymore. So there's a lot of batteries that are not being used or then key. And our idea is to use these batteries somehow on another application. So same happens with telecom. But if you look at the introduction of renewable sources in the grid, and especially here in Brazil, they're known, known controllable as solar and wind. So it would be really interesting to have some sort of storage to store this energy while you're generating, where you have wind and sun. And in other cases, when you, you need energy, you would use energy from this storage or huge storage systems. But to buy new batteries for that is really expensive and it's non-feasible. On the other hand, if you think about these second life batteries, batteries that have already been used in a car and you just adapt this battery, classify, optimize the reuse of the cells. It can be, it can be a fit, it can be feasible, it can be good for the electrical grid in a real large sense. So we are working on BMSs, on, on solutions to allow the second life batteries, which give us not only the cost size, which we are reducing the cost by sharing the batteries, using twice. But also when you think about the environment, it's really environment friendly and it's really good for Brazil and the road in some sense. So the benefits are several, integration of renewable sources. We can integrate with this electric vehicles, charging infrastructure. There are several applications, for example, agribusiness. Brazil is really strong on agribusiness and there is a need for promoting efficiency and security on agribusiness. And also, for example, charging electric station, which is depicted here in the, in the image and on the middle image. Well, moving a little bit forward to the sustainability and decarbonization section. So we are approaching or we are getting close to how we connect all of this and the hydrogen initiatives that we have here in order to provide solutions for sustainability, decarbonization. So firstly, I'll talk about sustainable mobility. It's again the idea of having a mobility more sustainable, using battery, using electrical energy and biofuel. As has already been commented here, Brazil has ethanol as a solution, which is already clean and can help getting the matrix more cleaner and reducing CO2 emissions very, very productively. So here we also have opportunities that can be explored as well as using H2 and fuel cell technologies, integrating these solutions or developing direct biomass, has already been commented before. The use of biomass as clean energy and introduce and into a matrix are combining with solutions on hydrogen. And in some sense, promoting the hydrogen use or the hydrogen market in Brazil, which I think it's a, it's a great, it's a great opportunity. Okay, moving to hydrogen-based technology as energy sector, that's what I believe, what we believe here in PTI. This movement, this transformation is already happening. So H2 has been seen as a solution. So using renewable energy that can, that can come from any renewable source, as depicted here, solar, wind or hydro biomass. And we are looking to these trends. And by trends, it's, I can say it's already reality. We're seeing this movement day by day. So we expect that by 2030, 2050, hydrogen will represent really a lot of energy consumed. A lot of revenue will be, will be, will be generated by the hydrogen economy. And we need to, to move forward on, not only on technology, but also looking at the markets that we need to develop. So the Brazilian market today, nowadays, is basically looking for gray H2. Not looking, it's using gray H2. But we have already policies from the government indicated that we should move to a greener H2 generation. So we do have a lot of opportunity here in Brazil. And that's, that's the object of this slide, to show that we have real opportunity because we have a lot of renewable energies, as I said. Solar and biomass and wind, for example, that can help us to generate hydrogen and then give us applications for the, for the hydrogen. To compose all of these things together. So the, the context here in Brazil is really positive in the sense of that our government is also issuing national guidelines toward this sustainable future. So I have several examples here. EPA with this note discussing the use of hydrogen in several colors, as we say here, not only green hydrogen per se, but also blue. And we should move forward to explore more applications for hydrogen. And now we have our Ministry of Energy developing and introducing a national program for hydrogen. And we are also part of this. What I would like to share here is what we are doing, what we've been doing at PTI when thinking about hydrogen. So we've been working on hydrogen for at least 10 years. So we started around 2010, 2011 with some R&amp;D projects and we've been evolving. We've been getting more mature solutions. So either developing core skills or people, best practices for O&amp;M, for operation and maintenance. We've been developing some R&amp;D solutions, looking for the stack, for the electrolyzer, to create here a demonstration place, demonstration site for technology application. So we do have a facility, we do have an H2 hydrogen power plant here, operational power plant. It's, it's a small power plant, but it's operational and can be used to test, to, to see and to explore alternative technical solutions for hydrogen. And in the last couple of months, we've been approaching the idea or we've been putting effort on promoting technol, not only technology, but also the market development. And this has been our, our efforts in the last couple of months, which has been, which has been leading, leading us to make great partnerships with a couple of companies here in Brazil, also private and public sectors, which is very good for us. So when you look at the broader spectrum of tech routes for low carbon cycle and there's a lot of opportunities here, not only from energy generation, but also applications. What we are looking at right now here in PTI, we are focusing on, on the primary sources as hydro, solar and, and wind, as I mentioned, through electrolyzers and generating. as I mentioned, through electrolyzers and generating hydrogen for several types of applications. So we are scaling up some projects with partners on the size of megavolt electrolyzers with the intention of making a proof of concept of the feasibility of the whole H2 chain here in Brazil. With the scenario that we have here, with the costs that we have here for renewable energy, for applications of the hydrogen. So this being our mission nowadays. Our vision is to promote this hydrogen innovation chain, as I said. So PTI wants to be in the center of this, of this image, connecting supplier, investor and demand by providing projects that can be useful to all of these parts developing the market here in Brazil. And coming to the end, our ongoing H2 projects, there's a lot of ongoing activity here. Some of them has already been commented before. As for example, the PESIN idea, we've been partnering with PESIN as well to the solutions that they're trying to implement there. We have already, we have also partnership with a local port here, a local, I mean, in the state of Paraná. And also Itaipu, which is our maintainer, which is an electrical generator. But also we have been partnering with foreign governments agencies as well. As I can cite, for example, GIC from Germany. So we are getting it together, putting our minds together to create solutions to connect supplier, investor and demand to make this whole H2 cycle work here in Brazil. So take away considerations, I would like to point. Energy transition process is already happening, so it's a reality. Several countries have already committed, they have already committed to this transition process. So we need to follow, we need to create an environment in which we can actually make it happen. So that's the mission of a technology park or an innovation and R and D centers. That's the mission of PTI. How we can create an environment in which these solutions can be applied, can be a reality. So PTI plays a very important role here in Brazil. Our, our objectives are to develop skills, core competencies on people and create new solutions and business models. And what I brought here today to share with you were some solutions on energy storage systems, which I believe they are intrinsically connected to hydrogen solutions. There's, I do believe there's no silver bullet solution here. So what we are trying to create is an integrated environment in which you can plug a lot of elements together. Hydrogen, storage systems, renewable energy generation and put up all of this together to generate a sustainable and cleaner matrix. And at the end, we live in a networked world. So we live by integration and connections. So this is really important for us at PTI. We are, we are always keen to connect, to integrate with other partners. And we do want to solve our local problems here so that we can move to global solutions. So to finish, I say come and visit us. You'll be very welcome and PTI is our best place to innovate. Thank you very much for your time and patience. And I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Deitz, for the interesting presentation and to show us this broad view of the electro, electro sector scenario. So we have time for question. There is no, no question on the chat. So if there is no question, we can, we can follow up the agenda, we can continue. Thank you again, Deitz, for the presentation. And now, Matheus, you can...
Okay, thank you, Dr. Deitz. I confirm that the park of Itaipu is very nice place, very open to the, for guests and for people who want, that want to improve knowledge and create new opportunities. Now is the time for moving our presentation to a commercialization level. Next speaker is Dr. Gaetano Santonocito, that I consider him as a passionate person that for, for technology solution that has moved his passion for novel technology to a level ready for commercialization. Currently, he is the chief of EBC Energy Company and is the member of the Hydrogen Fuel Cell Association of Italy. Please, Dr. Santonocito, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Gaetano Santonocito, chairman of EBC Energy, as you already said. I join my regards and thanks to Ambassador Francesco Zarelo for his brief attending to this meeting and the chair, Dr. Lo Faro, and all participants. Our company is engaged in renewable energy sector from decades. And myself, I'm a first engineer graduated in 1982 and since then promoting virtuous approach towards environment. Our green energy applications are ranging from photovoltaic wind power, cogeneration and fuel cell technologies in both stationary power systems, energy supply to mobile telephone broadcasting BTS, for example, and shelters, and the automotive sector. Since 2005, we approach hydrogen generation for the sustainable mobility applications. We are among the oldest member of H2IT, the Associação Italiana de Energia e combustível, Italian Association of Hydrogen and Fuel Cell, and expert in European and national incentive connected to the Green Deal. We had an active role in consortiums such as Three Emotions, High Velocity and others, all within the Horizon 2020 Incentive Project. Together with H2IT, we work on the implementation of Italian Law Decree 25716, the coming from European DAFI, on the neutrality of sustainable fuels, on the Technical Rule of Fire Prevention of 23rd October to 2018, edited in the Official Gazette of 5 November 2018. And most of all, we prepared as members of H2IT the Strategic Plan for Hydrogen Mobility in Italy. First version was in 2016, expecting 20 hydrogen fuel station within 2020 and 200 within 2025. Strategic Plan then has been revised in November 2019 with different, more realistic targets according to our local Italian situation. In Europe, within the above-mentioned consortium, we did participate to various European projects for the realization of hydrogen bus fuel station for municipalities in France and Versailles and Po, in Holland, in Rotterdam, London in UK, Alborg in Denmark, to mention some sites. In slide three, I show our institutional relations and project follow, which are including the technical tables for IPCA, the Important Projects of Common European Interest, and PNIEC, Piano Nacional Integrato per Energia e Clima, the National Integrated Plan for Energy and Climate, as well as parliamentary hearings with H2IT together at our Senate and Deputy Chamber and to the MISE, the Ministry of Economic Development, Ministry of Environment, Ministry of Transport and Infrastructure. I personally organized in 2016 and 2017 the Letter of Intent signed by Governor Rossi and the MOU between Toscana Region and the FCA-HJU, the Fuel Cell Hydrogen Joint Undertaking for the EU contribution to regions of European countries. In this slide five, our main goal is the production of green hydrogen, to perform electrolyzes from photovoltaic energy, wind energy. And recently, we start studies on geothermal energy use connected to hydrogen production. These are some of our photovoltaic visualization, some of our wind power installation. We explain how hydrogen fuel cell is an electrochemical energy device that converts chemical energy of a fuel, hydrogen in our case, into electric energy and heat without using a thermal cycle. Fuel cell powered by hydrogen make it possible to produce electricity and hot water from hydrogen and oxygen. In this slide nine and ten is shown one of our device named purity. Purity is, for instance, an application initially designed for energy supply in marginal area. A container surrounded by photovoltaic panel is capturing solar electric power sent inside the container to an electrolyzer, which is producing hydrogen that is compressed and stored in cylinders and then sent to a fuel cell, producing electricity for various utilities. The water steam discharged by the fuel cell at the end of the process is recondensated into water by means of a serpent time. So a closed water cycle is performed. Application of purity are not only as energy supply in remote marginal areas where energy network supply is either complicated or expensive. But in Brazil, for example, have been tested for Pivo, I use the Brazil word, for irrigation system, energy feeding, as well as in Argentina and in Arab Peninsula or Africa extensive cultivations. Purity can be used as energy unit in national parks, for example, in information service points, recharge of bikes, other solution that you can see in the slide, or detached seashore beaches, refreshment delivery on service points, whenever, wherever an energy network is complicated or expensive to be realized, as we said. Hydrogen in transport. In this slide, we point out that the future challenges is surely to improve hydrogen fuel cell cars that use electric current produced inside the vehicle by the fuel cell rather than electric energy deriving from batteries with all the lithium source and waste management problems connected, where we well know. Here we are at one of our exhibition stand where we promote our system. Then you can see the inside of an hydrogen generation shelter, the hydrogen delivery dispenser during the maintenance session at ENI Egypt Station, realized by us in 2005. In the last picture on the right, it is, this is shot during our European Hydrogen Car Tour Brussels-Napoli at the Exhibition Day in Florence, December 2017. In slide thirteen, this is the modular hydrogen cylinder pack of an hydrogen filling station. In the next slide, hydrogen mobility can be considered for us for both public transport service station and captive fleet for companies, municipality cars, first aid cars, vehicles to be used in parks and environment protected area, ready solution for an ecological future. This is a picture of our production plant, carry on. In slide sixteen, here we show the several application of hydrogen in welding, cutting, food industry, glass processing, jewelry. What is our goal? Our goal is what you would like to point out as a methodology applicable, I think, in both Brazil and Italy, where hydrogen can mean innovation. Main road refuel station, hybrid vehicles, HICEV, hydrogen internal combustion engine vehicles working with CNG, compressed natural gas and hydrogen, FCV, fuel cell electric vehicles, hydrogen bus refueling stations, decarbonization of ports and waterways. We are in this period cooperating with Autotirreno Ports Authority, for example. In this next slide, we want to point out that electric and hydrogen technology in sectors such as the automotive will not immediately replace traditional internal combustion engines, since they will remain on the market for still some time to come. Despite the rise in sales of electric cars worldwide, however, the methods of use will change a lot. For example, already in city center, only cars with very low emission can circulate, such as the Sierra in Milan or the limited traffic zone in my own town, Florence, or other Italian, European cities. What is the need? The need is to identify the most functional tools to support the transition process of the automotive sector. European ministers highlighted the role played by investments in research and development aimed at discovering new technologies that will be used for the production of eco-sustainable means of transport. But also believe that investment aimed at continuous training of technician, worker and in the same sector are important in this transition. The industrial policy that will arise with the advent of the latest structural innovation will have to enhance both company know-how, the skill of workers and eco-sustainable mobility. We are talking of a sector involving about 260,000 employees only in Italy. Therefore, during the transition to fuel cell vehicles, toward fuel cell mobility, we propose to modify internal combustion engines to be run by hydrogen mix with CNG. Thanks to modern upgraded electronics of cars in order to decrease immediately the CO2 level in view of the 2030 and 2050 targets, allow the transition of both parts, components manufacturer and car maintenance services, mechanics, electronics technician, all people that needs to be formed for the new transition. Despite the engine horsepower due to the lower calorific power of hydrogen when burning a motor gives, for example, 40 HP compared to 100 IP of a benzene fuel, which means around half. But the speed, max speed is lower, still suitable for today's road limits. You can see from the slide. And for example, the mix of CNG and H2 in a Fiat car 1600 CC engine allows over 300 kilometers driving range that can reach 700, including the benzene tank. Of course, when the market and infrastructure will allow fuel cell vehicles to take place in the broad mobility, we will count on cars capable of 900 kilometer driving range, as a Hyundai in Exo, for example. But to have a mobility including hybrid CNG plus hydrogen vehicles of affordable transformation cost will give a big incentive, in our opinion, to the opening of new H2 fuel stations, which will have the effect of training also the fuel cell car market that without refueling station, nobody will buy or rent. Brazil was a pioneer country in the use of biofuel and ethanol, world's second largest producer. And we see a good trend of acceptance in Brazilian market for a new hybrid gas fueling such as CNG plus hydrogen mix. In the slide 2020, on here, we can see an example of the composition of an hydrogen fueling station, electrolyze generation unit, the driver dryer system to eliminate oxygen, the purification system, because fuel cell require high purified hydrogen, the compression system that in our plants can start from 200 bars for the CNG plus hydrogen mixture, 350 bar for fuel cell bus and 700 bar for fuel cell cars. The project design is also shown here and it can be seen the low pressure buffer tank. I don't know if you can see well in the picture. The compression side and the high pressure cylinder going to fill the vehicle from the dispenser. In the slide 22, this is a private fueling system by electrolyzes for captive fleets. While the road and main highway service station will require high production volume, which are subjected to the restriction of our Technical Rule of Fire Prevention, which is requiring a distance of 200 meters in case of areas with building density over 3 cubic meters per square meter, a captive fleet filling unit can be sized below the 50 cubic meter per hour hydrogen production limit, which we are talking of four kilo, more or less, 12 cubic meter per one kilo of hydrogen, that is not obliging to the 200 meter positioning restriction from built areas. Here are an example, for example, of captive fleet. In next slide 24, this is the first hydrogen station made in Italy of which I cooperated in the construction with Mr. Benedetti for Egypt ENI in 2005. Green hydrogen made by water, electrolyzes by means of photovoltaic panel, placed over the station roof, three wind system and one cogenerator. A similar station was commissioned by ENI also in Roma Maggiana, ADS service station, never used to the public. Only operative station to the public in Italy is in Bolzano, in the north. Others for bus, one station for bus made by Ericic is in San Remo, but also not working at the moment. In San Donato, made by ENI, in San Donato, Milano outskirts. And two more also never entered in full function, which are one in Milan Ring Road, which is only cylinder pack made by Sappio, and one at Capodorlando in Sicily. This is a picture of a captive fleet. I thank you for your attention and I believe I, I was within the living time. Good afternoon and thank you again.
Thank you, Dr. Santonocito. Any question from the audience? Anybody? Okay, Dr. Santonocito, I thank you again for your nice presentation, for the information provided with us and for the technology that you have improved to a level for ready for commercialization. Now I give again the floor to my colleague, Daniel. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Matheus. Now is Dr.
Now is Dr. Lopez. We start the presentation. Dr. Lopez, please. You can share your screen with us.
Yes, thank you, Daniel.
Okay, I introduce Dr. Lopez. Dr. Lopez, he is a mechanic engineer from the Federal University of Ciara in Brazil. He got his PhD in Energy Systems Planning from the State University of Campinas, Unicamp, and he is also the co-founder of Hytron, and he holds the commercial director position now. The focus provided the development of technological solutions to meet the demands of the sector, focused on electric, biofuels, oil, gas, and hydrogen. So, the flowers are, Dr. Lopez, please, you can start the presentation. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for the invitation. I'm very proud to be here today with you. And today, I will show you a little bit about Hytron. Hytron is a Brazilian company, part of a German economic growth, focused in hydrogen solutions for production and purification of this gas. Talking a little bit about our history, Hytron is a technology company founded in 2003, as in spin-off of the hydrogen laboratory at Unicamp, University of Campinas in São Paulo. That's the, Unicamp is an important university in Latin America. And when we founded Hytron, we did this with strong activities in R&amp;D and focus innovative applied solutions. Because of that, Hytron created a very important expertise here in Brazil, in production of hydrogen and energy generation, with a lot of projects in R&amp;D here in Brazil. With this, we have a multidisciplinary team with specialists, with PhD, master degrees, focused in technology development. So, we already have our own development in system design, integrations, supervision, control, etc. In 2015, we did our headquarters in Sumare, in the Campinas region here in Brazil, focused in fabrication and tests of our technologies. Last November, the Neumann-Nessar Group acquired Hytron and promoted this big opportunity to produce hydrogen technology from Brazil to the world. Neumann-Nessar is an important group, leader in compressor supply around the world. We are in 10 strategic countries around the world, and we have almost 28 companies in these 10 countries. Here in Brazil, we are talking about two units, the NEA in Belo Horizonte, responsible for all of the Latin America supply, and Hytron in Sumare, responsible for their hydrogen production equipments. Together, Hytron and NEA Brasil are the center of technology from NEA Group around the world in hydrogen production. We have around 1,200 employees, and the consolidated sales in 2020 about 230 millions of euro. In NEA Group, we have five business units. Here we have the compressor unit solutions, that is the most important area inside the group, but we already have our equipment for maintenance of compressor, process solutions, digital solutions, and energy solutions where Hytron is inside. In this area, we are talking about the hydrogen production, green hydrogen production, electricity production, and others, synthetic fuels, etc. When we are talking about the value chain of hydrogen, we are present in all of the value chain. Since we have our company that produce biogas, and from this biogas, we can compress this gas for the industrial use and then the others, or we can use this biogas to produce hydrogen in a Hytron equipment, or use the electricity to produce hydrogen from electrolyzers. When we have the hydrogen, we can compress this hydrogen for all the use, for the logistical use, for the storage use, and the applied use in mobility, for example. When the client needs, we can work together with power-to-power projects, producing hydrogen and electricity, convert this hydrogen in electricity. So, the NEA Group is present in all of this value chain. Talking about the Hytron products, we have five most important projects. We are talking about electrolysis, pen electrolysis, and alkaline electrolysis, using the renewable source for to produce hydrogen from water. We have our own equipment to produce hydrogen from natural gas or biomethane in our biomethane reformers, and we already have our own technology to produce hydrogen from ethanol. That is very important from our country, because in Brazil, we have all of the logistic and to access this green field to produce hydrogen. And we already have our own technology to purify hydrogen for automotive application, for example, industrial case, etc. So, we starting with the electrolysis. I have here a very short movie, I will share with you. When we are talking about our technology inside the Hytron facility, so here you can see our technology and a part of our facility too. Kindly, can you hear the sound?
Yes.
So, when we are talking about electrolysis, Hytron electrolysis, we have our technology to produce hydrogen up to 1,000 normal cubic meters per hour in our equipment that consumes something like a 5 megawatt hour, using in this case the green energy and water to produce hydrogen and oxygen. Our solution is a turnkey solutions, when we are considering the gas purification, the thermal management, the power electronics, and all the control and supervision platform from our equipment. In this case, we can produce hydrogen with purity up to 960, is 99 duck 49 after the coma, and the maximum operating pressure about 40 bars. Here, we have the scales we are working nowadays. When we are talking about the small scale ones, we are talking about the from 10 to 30 normal cubic meters of hydrogen per hour. When we are talking about the industry energy, we are talking about the 60 from 1,000 normal cubic meter for hydrogen per hour. And with our 5 megawatt solutions, we are offering our multi-megawatt plant, and we are talking about in this case 100 megawatts to 100 megawatts power plants using electrolysis. Here, I have the first hand from you, for you, the first megawatt electrolyser in Brazil. Hytron is very proud to announce the contract and purchase order from this first megawatt sized electrolyser. Our client is ADP Brazil, part of the group Energias de Portugal, and we are in this case supplying 1.3 megawatt electrolyser powered from solar and wind source to generate almost 250 normal cubic meters of hydrogen per hour in green hydrogen. Here, that picture here is inside the ADP facilities in Pessen, here in the state of Ciara, Brazil. In this slide here, I can show you our solution to produce 1,000 of normal cubic meter of hydrogen per hour. In this case, we are talking about a 5 megawatt stacks equipment, and all of the balance of plant containing, inside the containers, and promoting all the equipment needs to produce hydrogen and pure hydrogen from electrolysis. But we already have our strategy to produce hydrogen and other fields for the PTX solution. So, we are talking about the use of renewables, as we have here in Brazil in Tytu, for example, from hydroelectricity or from solar or aolique, producing electricity, and after that producing hydrogen, and use this hydrogen for power-to-power projects, power-to-mobility projects, or when we have good source of CO2, using this CO2 with hydrogen to produce synthetic fuels and chemicals. In this case, we have our project with Reps Alcinope Brazil, Hytron, Instituto Senai Biosynthetic, and University of São Paulo, when we have here the solution to produce hydrogen from renewables, to capture CO2 from the air or a good atmosphere, industrial atmosphere, and with hydrogen and CO using a fish interruption process, produce green fuels. In this case, we are focused in production of a diesel, but we are looking to produce jet fuel too. I have another very short movie talking about this project I want to show you. So, this project are running today, and almost in one year, we are producing our ethios from renewables here in Brazil too. And when we are talking about the green hydrogen production or renewable hydrogen production in Brazil, we are talking only about the hydrogen production from electrolysis. Here in Brazil, with a very, very good partnership with PTI, Hytron is using our technology to structure projects in hydrogen production from electrolysis, but also from biomethane reformers and from ethanol reformers too. In this case, we have our technology to produce hydrogen in modular scale, in this case, we are talking about modular scale, something like 350 normal cubic meters of hydrogen per hour, either in turnkey solutions, promoting all the balance of plant inside our equipment, and the gas purification, the thermal management too, the control, and the supervisory platform. In this case, in the case of the reformers, we already have the high purity of hydrogen, and in this case, the pressure of operation is almost 10 bars. Here we have a technical picture, you can see here the reactors and the balance of plants, and here the solution modular in skid or containers, depending of the size. Here we have the biomethane equipment or natural gas reformer that use something like 4 ducts 8 cubic meters of methane to produce a kilogram of hydrogen, 35 liters of water, and only 4 ducts duct 7 kilowatt hour per kilogram of the hydrogen. In this case, we have all the standards to use this the hydrogen in automotive application, for example, and we have here the similar maturity, technological maturity from our electrolysis. In this other case, we are talking about to use ethanol to produce renewable hydrogen, green hydrogen, and in this case, the use is almost 7 ducts 6 liters of ethanol to produce a kilogram of hydrogen, 30 liters of water, and only 2 ducts 3 kilowatt hour per kilogram of hydrogen produced. In this case, we can E, nesse caso, podemos ver aqui algo como 12 vezes menos consumo de eletricidade comparando com os eletrizadores porque parte da energia para promover essa produção de hidrógeno vem do etanol, não da eletricidade como em eletrizadores. E aqui no Brasil temos o vantagem de usar etanol para produzir hidrógeno e, no nosso conceito, o etanol é um carregador de hidrógeno verde. Então, quando estamos falando do uso de etanol, temos o fato de que o etanol é um campo verde, um campo verdes, um campo renovável. É fácil de transporte, usado pelo Brasil. O Brasil tem muito potencial e somos importante jogador global no etanol e temos toda a cadeia de valor estabelecida. Então, aqui podemos ver, podemos promover as boas logísticas usando, em alguns casos, o etanol como carregador de hidrógeno. Então, aqui é só para pensar, mas quando estamos falando sobre o PTI, falamos sobre isso, quando estamos falando sobre o hidrógeno renovável no Brasil, estamos falando de todos esses tipos de fontes juntos, em alguns casos. E, como eu disse, já temos nossas soluções PSA para produzir hidrógeno puro. E aqui temos nossos dois modelos usando quase em eletrizadores e nosso sete modelo usando em nossos reformas para produzir esse hidrógeno puro. E dentro do NER Group temos toda a solução que nossos clientes precisam, começando, como eu disse, da produção de hidrógeno verde, da produção de hidrógeno verde com os compressores e o armazenamento desse hidrógeno para as aplicações. Então, o NER Group é realmente o especialista em hidrógeno e podemos usar toda a nossa tecnologia para promover a melhor solução para nossos clientes. Aqui temos nossos compressores para compressar esse hidrógeno para o uso...
Por favor, Dr. Lopez.
Ok, essa é a última tela. E aqui temos nosso sistema de armazenamento de hidrógeno. Então, com essa tela, eu termino. Muito obrigado novamente. É um prazer estar aqui com amigos e muito legal ouvir de você. Muito obrigado.
Muito obrigado novamente, Daniel Lopez. Muito obrigado pela apresentação. Então, se alguém tem pergunta, por favor. Não há pergunta. Muito obrigado novamente, Daniel Lopez. Então, move para a agenda, Massimiliano.
Ok, agora é o tempo de ter a oração de Sandra Barba. Ela se define como uma mulher apaixonada por geração de energia de recursos renováveis e por transição de energia. Atualmente, ela está seguindo o desenvolvimento do setor em Brasil para ENEL Green Power. ENEL Green Power é uma fração de ENEL que não precisa de apresentação since é um dos principais jogadores no mundo para a geração de energia e entrega. Por favor, o chão está com você.
Muito obrigado, Massimiliano. Muito obrigado a todos. É um prazer para mim estar aqui nessa apresentação, nesse evento de interesse que pode unir todos os esforços da pesquisa e também do setor de negócios para desenvolver este incrível mundo de hidrógeno. Então, minha apresentação de 15 minutos é baseada no hidrógeno verde como complemento à eletrificação. Sou Sandra Barba, como o Massimiliano disse. Eu trabalho no time de desenvolvimento de negócios do Brasil, de ENEL Green Power. É um prazer estar aqui. Então, vamos começar. Como você sabe, ENEL Green Power é parte do NER Group. É uma multinacional criada em Itália, integrada grupo liderando todos os segmentos do setor de energia. Então, com 74 milhões de usuários no mercado, ENEL é o primeiro operador de rede no mundo. Então, também somos o maior jogador privado no setor de recursos renováveis com capacidade de 49 gigawatts de recursos renováveis. E também temos o maior cliente de vendas no mundo com 70 milhões de clientes. Também estamos presentes em 31 países, claro que o Brasil é um deles. Então, eu queria começar com esta tela. Como você pode ver, como você sabe, o APCC especial reportou sobre 1.5 graus Celsius disse que a eficiência energética junto com os recursos renováveis e a mudança de demanda para serviços de energia poderia contribuir com mais de 90% das reduções de emissão de CO2 necessárias para estar alinhado com esta ambição do acordo de Paris de 1.5 graus Celsius. Então, durante a próxima década, isso será caracterizado por cada crescimento de recursos renováveis e também a eletrificação de consumo e também a digitalização das infraestruturas. ENEL está colocando no centro da sua estratégia a aceleração da transição de energia como um papel central na luta contra o change climático. Então, o objetivo de decarbonização completa de ENEL para 2050 inclui uma redução de 80% em emissão de gás direta de greenhouse em kwh versus 2017 para 2030, como você vê na direita da tela. Nós aumentamos a ambição porque, como você diz na parte esquerda, tínhamos apenas a redução de 70% e nós aumentamos esta ambição para 80%. Então, ENEL seria o primeiro grande utility global integrado para definir um objetivo de redução de emissão consistente com o pleno juramento da União para limitar o calor global a 1.5 graus, como validado pela iniciativa de objetivo baseado em dimensão. Então, avançando... Avançando, então, esta tela é muito interessante. A eletricidade deve ser o principal vetor nesta transição. Como você vê na parte esquerda da tela, os recursos renováveis estão deslocando a geração térmica no misto de geração de eletricidade no mundo. Então, a maior parte de energia renovável que chega a um custo econômico e social menor permite aos consumidores obter uma maior parte do consumo de energia eletrizada. Então, neste progresso que estamos indo em direção às emissões zero, para 2021, o grupo ENEL aumentará sua capacidade de recursos renováveis o que nos permite estabelecer um novo recorde de crescimento de 5.8 gigawatts de recursos renováveis comparado com o 3.1 do ano passado. Então, teremos uma investimento de cerca de 160 bilhões de euros no mundo, de quais 85 bilhões de euros que são esperados para os recursos renováveis para levar cerca de 145 gigawatts de capacidade de instalação. Isso significa que vamos crescer três vezes a capacidade de instalação de recursos renováveis para 2030. E na outra lado da tela, na direita, vemos que o objetivo de decarbonizar completamente nossa matriz seria alcançado para 2027. Então, apenas para começar, eu queria apenas destacar que os vetores de energia altas que incluem hidrógeno verde são muito, muito importantes para o grupo alcançar esses grandes objetivos. Então, por hidrógeno? Aqui é como um resumo da nossa visão. O hidrógeno é frequentemente considerado como um elemento que poderia garantir um futuro sustentável para nosso planeta. Então, claramente reconheçamos a importância de manter a eletrificação como a opção preferida para decarbonizar nossa economia. Por exemplo, em Hemedion ou transporte de rua, claramente acreditamos que a eletrificação seria a opção número um. Mas, claro, o hidrógeno é o melhor uso como complemento, não competidor, para a eletrificação para decarbonizar esse setor que é chamado de setores difíceis de abertura. Então, aquelas partes da economia que não podem ser facilmente ou econômicamente eletrificadas e que são responsáveis por mais de 25% das emissões de CO2 no mundo. Então, estamos falando, por exemplo, do setor de cimentação, fertilizantes, estileiro, refinamento, química, pão e papel, entre outros. Também estamos falando de aviagem, por exemplo, uma grande parte desse setor é difícil de abertura. Então, para o desenvolvimento continuo de recursos renováveis junto com a expectativa de redução de custo de eletrizadores que é um ponto-chave importante desses planos fará competitivo com o hidrógeno verde ou o azul. Então, realmente acreditamos que o hidrógeno verde vai ser mais barato do que o azul para 2030. Então, poderia fornecer uma solução custo-effetiva para decarbonizar aqueles setores difíceis de abertura que eu mencionei antes. Como podemos saber, eu não sou a pessoa para explicar isso porque estou em um evento de pessoas muito, muito técnicas, mas como você sabe, temos diferentes formas de produzir hidrógeno. O mais conhecido seria o azul, vermelho e verde. Então, realmente acreditamos que o hidrógeno verde é a forma sustentável de produzir hidrógeno, é o único que não gera emissão adicional de carbono no seu processo de produção. De fato, o hidrógeno verde é produzido através da eletrizagem que já mencionei antes na apresentação de meus colegas e teríamos como resultado um produto livre de carbono. Por outro lado, acreditamos que o hidrógeno verde, por exemplo, que é gerado por combustíveis fosifusos é um processo de processamento altamente intenso de carbono e acreditamos, por outro lado, que o azul requer construção de fábricas complexas e caras. Então, não queremos criar assetos estranhos, por exemplo. É por isso que acreditamos que o hidrógeno verde é o perfeito complemento para a decarbonização e para o processo de eletrificação que o grupo ENEL está conduzindo. Nesta tela, queria apenas destacar que o NER Group tem incubado o espaço de hidrógeno através da sua divisão de inovação nos últimos anos, mas temos entrado no setor de hidrógeno verde em 2020, criando uma unidade de negócio dedicada. Nós a consideramos como uma startup, por exemplo, apenas para rápido track o desenvolvimento dos projetos. Aqui, nesta tela, você pode ver o objetivo do crescimento do NER Group. Nós planejamos aumentar nossa capacidade de hidrógeno para mais de 2 gigawatts para 2030. Então, temos 10 anos para alcançar este objetivo. Alinhado com este enfoque, já estamos implementando projetos de hidrógeno verde no mundo. Como você pode ver, os Estados Unidos, a Itália, a Chile são nossos primeiros países onde estamos desenvolvendo nossos projetos, mas, claro, o Brasil está na lista. Avançando, temos a posição do uso de hidrógeno verde. Até hoje, como sabemos, o hidrógeno baseado em combustíveis fosifusos é predominantemente usado como stock de feed em refinamento e amonia. Mas acreditamos que o hidrógeno verde será a solução para decarbonizar esta demanda existente que hoje em dia gera mais de 800 milhões de toneladas de emissões de CO2. Então, acreditamos que as aplicações de carbono livre poderiam fornecer o hidrógeno nesses setores chamados de poder para química e poder para calor, por exemplo. No primeiro, acreditamos que o hidrógeno poderia trabalhar para a decarbonização, por exemplo, na produção de estileiro, apenas para dar um exemplo. E no outro setor, poder para calor, a decarbonização do processo poderia ser usado nesses setores que exigem alta grade de calor, por exemplo, na produção de madeira ou vidro ou cerâmica, apenas para dar alguns exemplos. Também acreditamos que o hidrógeno verde seria útil para transporte marítimo longo e aviagem. Por exemplo, também acreditamos que no transporte de mineração, o hidrógeno verde poderia ser uma solução para seus objetivos de decarbonização. Então, não esquecendo que a eletrificação é a opção preferida para decarbonizar os outros setores, mas o hidrógeno poderia ser a solução para alcançar esse último milho da decarbonização que o grupo está planejando. Então, para continuar, temos aqui duas configurações de hidrógeno verde. Na parte esquerda da tela, temos o resco localizado de hidrógeno. Isso significa que a produção de hidrógeno é perto da produção de energia. Então, temos as plantas de recursos renováveis, temos o sistema de eletrizadores muito próximo da planta e então usamos uma maneira de transportar, armazenar e também transportar o hidrógeno produzido para o usuário industrial. E na direita da tela, temos a outra configuração que preferimos, que seria a configuração stand alone. Isso significa a produção de hidrógeno verde para o final de prestação perto do ponto de consumo. Então, dessa maneira, tanto a produção quanto a produção são 100% livre de carbono. Isso seria como o esquema ideal para transportar a eletricidade, mas não o hidrógeno. Preferimos transportar elétrons, não hidrógeno. Dessa maneira, evitamos criar assetos estranhos ou linhas de管道 ou essas ideias de combinar hidrógeno com gás que não concordamos. Então, essa direita da tela mostraria o que seria a nossa opção preferida para configurar o hidrógeno verde. No entanto, acreditamos que cada projeto é um projeto a um projeto. Então, estamos muito open para criar parcerias e também para entender as necessidades de nossos clientes apenas para entender o que eles precisam, onde estão locados, qual tipo de energia preferem. Então, estamos muito open para uma relação comercial com os prestadores. Então, apenas para avançar, esta seria a minha última tela. Então, realmente acreditamos que o Brasil pode alcançar um custo competitivo elevado de hidrógeno porque temos vento e solar abundantes. Então, a eletricidade de recursos renováveis no Brasil não é um problema. Do outro lado, temos uma rede elétrica de energia integrada de baixo carbono. E realmente acreditamos que temos um potencial de produção em escala, tanto para mercados domésticos como de exportação. Para o curto prazo, acreditamos que temos que produzir hidrógeno para satisfazer o mercado doméstico primeiro e depois poderíamos pensar em exportação. No entanto, acreditamos que há alguns desafios que devem ser abordados. Só para mencionar alguns. O primeiro seria inovação e redução de custo. Então, apesar das claras vantagens no termo de eficiência e sustentabilidade a longo prazo, hoje o hidrógeno verde é mais costoso do que o hidrógeno produzido por combustíveis fosifusos, isso não é novo. Mas acreditamos que investir em inovação para aumentar a eficiência de eletrizadores e tecnologia avançada para sistemas de armazenamento mais eficientes e menos caros poderia nos levantar para ter um hidrógeno verde muito competitivo no país. Por outro lado, acreditamos que incentivar através de esquemas de suporte o transporte de grãos para hidrógeno renovável para hidrógeno verde é necessário em enduses específicas, por exemplo, começando com as indústrias que já usam hidrógeno como stock de feed, por exemplo, refinérios ou produção de amonia. for example, refineries or ammonia production, we can progressively move forward to hard-to-abate sectors, for example. We think that supporting the development of a local renewable hydrogen supply chain would be great in order to scale up electrolyzer production capacity. We believe that an adequate regulatory framework sponsored by the regulator would be key, a key enable to future green hydrogen production and deployment in the country. And on the other hand, permitting, not forgetting permitting also for renewable electricity because of course, we want to produce green hydrogen, but we need also to develop green plants, renewable plants. So permitting, it's going to be very, very important, both for renewable plants and for hydrogen production. So without speeding up this procedure authorizations, it would be very, very difficult to continue developing this market in the country. And just to finish, we are building in open partnerships. We believe that this kind of events and this kind of partnership between all stakeholders of the hydrogen production value chain is fundamental. We need all stakeholders to be involved in this energy transition. So we believe that the lack of awareness of the urgency of action and what other players are doing are at the root of such missing support. We believe that an additional challenge is posed by stakeholders, often natural resistance to change. But we believe that it's needed a change in the behavior of all stakeholders. So just to finish, the last idea that I wanted to share with you is that a new mindset, open to embracing change and innovation, needs to be promoted among stakeholders. So that would be the presentation from our side. I'm Sandra, as I said before, I'm representing Enel in this great event. So if you have any comment or question, we can also join some efforts, of course, after this event. So we are open to your comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sandra, for this presentation. So we are slightly late, but I would like to give the opportunity for, give an answer to the question that I'm finding in the chat. The first one is coming from Adolfo Yulianelli. She is saying that beginning a nice presentation, so compliments for you. Then much attention today is paid towards the CO2 emission reduction. Under the perspective of larger natural gas, biogas utilization for blue hydrogen production, no attention seems to be paid toward methane emissions. Even though everyone knows that methane is a dangerous greenhouse gas. Could you discuss about the strategy of Enel Group in this regard, if any? Please, very fast if you can. About the issues as methane as greenhouse gas.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question. Could you repeat the last part, please, Monsimiliano? What are they?
It is meaning if Enel is doing something for reducing methane emissions. Methane emission is our known greenhouse gas.
Yeah, of course. Well, as I said before, our strategy would be focused on producing green hydrogen, only green hydrogen. We don't believe in producing blue hydrogen. So in this, based on this idea, we believe that producing green hydrogen would be free of methane and greenhouse gas emissions. I don't know if this answered the question. Otherwise, we can meet afterwards and we can discuss a little bit more about this information.
The other question is, thank you, the other question is coming from Gaetano Santorocito. Any interest in Brazil about the geothermal energy as a source to provide hydrogen vector? Geothermal energy is consistent without temporary interruption or fluctuation. It is stable and consistent. Geothermic energy can be used to generate the needed electricity for water electrolysis. Any program in Brazil on geothermal projects?
Okay, well, yeah, thank you very much for your question. We believe geothermal is also a renewable source. Now, in Brazil, we're focusing on wind and solar, as are the main technologies we are developing in the country. So for now, geothermal is not going to be the focus of development of green hydrogen in Brazil. Just solar and wind, for now.
And then Dr. Machado say, ask about methane leakage is aligned with the previous question. Is loss for methane leakage, is loss of revenue by gas corporation to be addressed by sensor, high-oT digitalization as well as by regulation? So it is a point of view, it is not a question, I mean. Would you clarify your position, Giovanni? Would you say something about this?
I'm just saying, I'm just saying that methane leakage is important, but it should be understood as a loss of revenue by the companies that deal with that. And there are already a lot of investments in technology to address this through digitalization, sensors and Internet of Things and by regulation. So it should be addressed, but it's not a major barrier.
The aspect is Enel can have the strength and financial plus infrastructure source to organize a geothermal strategies, another note to the question raised before. So the last speech, please, Daniel, please introduce the last speech. Thank you again, Sandra.
Hey, thank you, thank you, Sandra, thank you, Monsimiliano. Now the last speech comes from Dr. Machado. Dr. Machado, you can share your screen, please. Machado is an economist and a doctor of science in energy plan at Federal University of Rio de Janeiro. He has also a huge experience in the energy sector. And now he is the director for energy economics and environmental studies at EPE. Please, Machado, the floor is yours. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you so much, Daniel. Well, hello, everyone. First, I would like to thank the organizer for inviting EPE to give this talk on behalf of the Brazilian government. I also congratulate to the ambassador and my colleagues in the panel. EPE is the Energy Research Office, is a part of the Brazilian government associated to the Minister of Mines and Energy. EPE carries out studies and researches in energy sector to assist the Minister of Mines and Energy in elaborate the energy planning of Brazil. It has a similar role of the US Energy Information Administration plus some executive functions in energy auctions. Well, my professor, Paul Emilio Rafael and Daniel Lopez made my life very, much easier by addressing several issues that I will address. Even then, our approaches are somehow complementary. And it's a pleasure to me to, an honor to talk after them because they are leaders on hydrogen field in Brazil for a long time. Well, first of all, and it's already been addressed by Professor Paul Emilio and by Rafael and by Daniel Lopez, somehow. The Brazilian support to hydrogen, RND and innovation is not new. There's a long-term commitment to hydrogen. And this commitment has brought results already. Not only programs to support RND and innovation, but also related to that, capacity buildings in different centers like the PTI and the University of São Paulo and the Federal University of Rio de Janeiro and several other things. Also, there are some companies, private companies, automobile companies investing in fuel cell from ethanol in Brazil. And more important than all of this, it has generated a lot of capacity building, those programs in Brazil, and including some startups, just like you all saw. The Hydro is one of them. Well, this long-term commitment to hydrogen has been reinforced recently by the National Council for Energy Policy Resolutions. The first one in February this year provide guidelines to prioritize areas, which includes hydrogen for those RND and innovation public and public-oriented funds in Brazil. Later on, in April, the CNEPA resolution requests that the Minister of Mines and Energy present a proposal for directives for the national hydrogen program with other ministers of the government. And this has already been released by the Brazilian government in last August. As mentioned before, there are six axes related to that that range from innovation, technological basis, to training and capacity building, energy planning, legal and regulatory framework, market growth and competitiveness and international cooperation. Well, hydrogen is already on the Brazilian energy planning. And as we can see through the national energy planning for 2050 and the technical note on hydrogen are released by EPE at the beginning of the year. And there are other studies in the pipeline for 2021. It's also important to mention that there are financial support for renewables and low-carbon hydrogen in Brazil, although there is not yet exclusive funds for that. But if you take a look to the whole value chain, so there is a lot of incentives and funds and financials, not only by Brazilian institutes, but also by international institutions that provide funds to renewables and low-carbon investments in Brazil. Also, Brazil is, hydrogen became a key issue in the Brazilian energy agenda. As everyone can, could check it, in the high-level dialogue on energy and international partnership, one of the energy compact released by Brazil was about hydrogen. There is also a lot of, a wide range of international partnership in Brazil from the Clean Energy Ministry to partnership with German, with US, with UK, with India and broadly with BRICS. There are other ones in discussions. So there will be, we are totally open to international and national investment in hydrogen economy. It's also important to say that the hydrogen has already a domestic market in Brazil. It used to be around one thousand, barely one thousand pounds. But now, after the close of some methanol plants in Brazil, it's around six hundred pounds. But we see a lot of potential in the short term to increase this domestic market in hydrogen that as of today is basically for raw material in the show process. As most part of the world, the main markets and the market potential in Brazil is very important. And it goes from fertilizer plants to refineries, methanol plants, mining and metallurgy, foods and others, and of course, energy storage to deal with the variability of new renewables and also fuel cell for forklift and other appliances. And also for transportation and particularly to build refineries to produce sustainable aviation fuels. It's also important to bear in mind that Brazil has the presence already of local and global players and suppliers, as some presentations before me has shown. I will pass through the next slides very quickly because it's just to give the sense of how hot the issue of hydrogen is in Brazil as of today. So there are announcements of strategies in RND, investments in automobile industry by international companies such as Nissan, Volkswagen, Toyota and Bosch. It's also, there are also plans and strategies announced by power sector in different areas from nuclear to the PTI, as mentioned before in the previous presentation. Furnace with PND Enel project to combine hydroelectricity, solar and hydrogen production into the Yara hydropower plants. Also, a lot of other sectors have been releasing and announcing strategies and plans of investments. This week, for instance, Raizen, that is a joint venture between Cozan and Shell, announced a five-years deal with Yara to sell biomethan for hydrogen and green ammonia production. Also, several other investments in Sierra and Rio Grande do Norte states and also in fertilizer producers such as Unigel in Camassari, Bahia state, that announced that will convert a closed unit from the seventies that used to be for methane steam reform to green hydrogen. Also, there are some high-scale green hydrogen project that has been announced in Brazil. When you sum up all of them, it's over twenty billion dollars. So there's a lot of movements in Brazil. Those are more concentrated on the coast and with focus on international market, but also with volumes that could be placed in the domestic market. I'm finalized my presentation, so I know I'm on time. But then I would like to wrap up everything I said. First, Brazil has a potential to be a key player in the hydrogen market. Not only because it has a huge natural involvement for hydrogen production, for different sources, although the focus, the goal will be, of course, low-carbon hydrogen. although the focus, the goal will be, of course, low-carbon hydrogen. There is a government commitment to hydrogen, Saudi regulation, and business environment in the energy sector, fair human capital, technological skills, and logistics to key international markets. Policies to get benefits from national competitive advantage, while creates new ones. We understand that this is very important. Otherwise, we'll destroy a lot of capital and previous investment. So we are, we understand that it's possible to match in time and change the assets and to re-qualify it for a new competitive advantage with low-carbon contents of those investments. Basically, we follow technological neutrality rather than lock in in specific technological routes. But we, as I mentioned before, the goal is to have a low-carbon hydrogen. There is an existing domestic market in Brazil and a huge market potential for the future. And we are open to a wide international partnership strategies. And finally, it's important to mention, as a previous speaker mentioned, Brazil has a very clean electricity supply. If you sum all the renewables, it's around 84% of the whole electricity supply is renewable in Brazil. If you add also the nuclear and another low-carbon content of electricity generation, it gives the right sense of how clean and possible to be a next zero we are already now. So thank you so much for the opportunity. And once again, I am glad to be here in this event. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Machado. Thank you very much for the nice presentation, the cool shows, the Brazilian Aquarela. But the end is the important, in the end, what is important is the low-carbon scenario. So let me see, there is some question? Yes, there is, yes. There are some questions.
Gaetano Santorosito is asking about the niobium is available in Brazil. And would you read, are you hearing me?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, he is asking that it is a well-known transition metal, quite rare, suitable for high-resistance welding. And we were studying changes to employ it in the production of new composite alloy hydrogen cylinder container. Thank you if any information about this possibility, this opportunity.
I know Brazil has a huge potential of niobium, but I don't have much information about that because this is dealt with by the area of mining, the Minister of Mines and Energy. But we can talk later if you want. You can reach me through email or, and I try to put you in contact with the people from the mining division of the Minister of Mines and Energy.
So, thank you so much for this interesting afternoon for us. Morning probably, morning for you. I think that, I hope that you found this as a great event, as an important and interesting event for catching information, for creating new cooperation. I would like to go to the conclusion because there is a practical problem here. In 20 minutes, I will be, I'll be removed from my office. The institute should close. It is just a practical problem that I have to solve. So to conclude, I need to say that three approaches I would suggest, three proposals I would suggest because I believe here there are the playmakers, the playmakers that can commit with this my proposal. The first one is I would like to propose the preparation of a paper that can be suggested for the publication on the International Journal of Hydrogen Energy, that is one of our supporting journal of this conference, that can represent a milestone of this event. The second approach is to suggest a multilateral agreement as a memorandum in order to facilitate the sharing of people and knowledge between the two countries, the organization involved in this, in this event. The last one is a more visionary approach that consisting in the realization of a district for excellence. For excellence in hydrogen-related technology that should be addressed mainly to the business. I discussed with this, on this approach also with Scientificatash and also with Daniel. And we found interesting the opportunity for creating a district directly in Brazil. The hosting institution should be, of course, at least discussed. And that should support with its facilities the work that should be carried out. And the CAPEX should be supported still by the business organization of both country. Of course, we would like to discuss about this visionary there with one, with each of you by creating an agenda of meeting the next weeks. And of course, in order to clarify better the idea we have in mind, we can have one-to-one meetings in order to discuss more in-depth about the strength and the constraints of this project. So in conclusion, I would like to give the floor to the Scientificatash in order to give the final remarks of this event. Professor Fabio Naro, are you in perfect?
Yes, I'm here. Okay, hello to everybody. I am, I was very happy to join this meeting and I found it really interesting. Of course, we agree and we can, we will give all our support to any initiative that it will be carried out starting from this meeting. But I hope that it can be done every year or every two years. I mean, this is a matter of discussion among all the people who are interested. I'm not an expert in hydrogen or in alternative energies. What I can say, it's a simple truth. The simple truth is that Italy and Brazil shares a lot of scientific and technological connections. Just to give you some numbers, Brazil is the fifth academic partner of Italy in the world. And Italian researchers are the sixth partners, scientific partners of Brazilian researchers in the world. And this huge exchange of competencies, of knowledge, is not well-recognized because it doesn't make system, it doesn't make something which can be seen outside the specific fields of interest. So I mean, this is something that we have to keep in mind and we have to work on it. And the idea that Massimiliano gave to us to make a kind of network, a kind of objective, a real objective where we can work on it, it's clearly of interest for us. Another little comment, as you have heard in this, in this meeting, there are industries, there are big brands who are involved basically in any sector of industrial and productive life of both countries. So again, I think that we can find the support for our agenda and we can find the support for our agenda in, based on the alternative energies, on sustainable development, and as this meeting shows, on hydrogen technologies. So now our effort will be to try to, as the ambassador said at the beginning, is to find out and to have a follow-up of this very interesting meeting. And the embassy will do all what is in our hands to help this process. Thank you very much again for giving me this opportunity to learn a lot.
Thank you so much to everybody. But at least, the last, but not the least, please switch on, everybody, the camera and make regards by hand in order to have the screenshot of this event. Please, if you can, just everybody, everybody can. Okay. Bye-bye. Bye-bye. Ciao.
Bye, ciao.
Ciao, ciao.
Brigado.
Ciao.